Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for February 20th, 2012. At this time, I would ask for everyone in the chambers to please silence or put your cellphones on vibrate. And at this time, we will begin with the Presentation of Colors by Boy Scout Troop 52 from St. Stevens Lutheran Church in Gold Hill, North Carolina. Please rise.
Call guard, prepare post colors. We join for pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To.
May we bow our heads? Father God in heaven, we thank you for this day, and we thank you, Lord, for the blessings of this country. Lord, we ask you to bless the decisions of this board and all that is assembled. We thank you, Lord, and we praise and honor you, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Also, I'd like to ask everyone who remains standing for another moment. We lost a very important member of the community this week, Tommy Williamson, for 55 years plus, I think, at the World Royal Club, and he impacted a lot of people through his time there, and if you were all standing in the room in the class for Tommy Williamson, thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, the first order of business is the approval or correction of amendments from the January 3rd, 2012 work session, and January 17th, 2012 regular meeting, and January 27th, 2012 retreat.
I move for approval.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Also, in front of you is the agenda for tonight, and at this time, I accept a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, first thing that we have is recognitions and presentations, and tonight, we have Mike Sims from Humane Society. Do we? Aaron? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I jumped right ahead, didn't I? Let's go back up, and we'll introduce the Boy Scout troop members.
Good evening. My name's Aaron Furr. Life scout rank, Eagle Scout candidate, Troop 52, Gold Hill, North Carolina, St. Stevens Lutheran Church. I go to Mount Pleasant High School, and I'm junior, and I'd like to go into the medical field for my future career.
My name is David Ozenhour. I'm a junior at Jesse C. Carson High School. I'm a life scout rank, and I'm about to finish up my Eagle project, and for my future career, I'd like to do something in computers.
My name is Matthew Freeze. I am currently a junior at Mount Pleasant High School. I am a life scout, and I am currently working on my Eagle project, too, and for my career when I grew up, I plan to be something with computers.
Okay, sorry about that. Now, we'll go to recognitions and presentations, so I'll ask Aaron Furr to come back up. And we'd like for you to tell us about your Eagle Scout project at Ruth's Memorial Shelter.
All right. I'd like to start off with, it's a real privilege being here this evening. It's been a long six months I've been working on this, you know. Started off, meet Mike Sims in July of last year, end of July, early August, and I drew a family friend who does community service with the Humane Society, and she got me, not sure how, but one day, I just got up there and met with him, talked, and he had a variety of different projects that needed to be done at the new shelter off Willshire, and I chose one that seemed like it would really benefit. And what I did was a walkway along the side of the building that goes to the back of the building that they use for vetting, different purposes, you know, it was the area was a real washout area, it was real nasty, you know. I got project approved in early September, and from there, we did fundraising, and one of the main fundraising things I did was auto bell car wash tickets. That was one good way that I was able to get the funds for because it wasn't cheap, but it was doable. So after that, got everything together, Workday set up, and beginning of January, January 12th, it's Saturday, and we finished it that day. Took about six, seven hours into that day, took a short lunch break, and then near to the end, we finished round three, and I think it turned out really good, and I'm glad it benefits for, you know, people and animals having to walk there because, you know, it was just a washout area in the rain. It looked fine when it was dry, but, you know, I believe I did a good part working with Mike.
We had a picture showing the work that you did, and it looks like you and your friends worked really hard to get the pathway in. It's a very nice, very nice job that you did, and we're always happy to recognize Eagle Scouts in the community. You do a lot of hard work to get to that point. There's a lot that leads up to getting, to doing this project to become the Eagle Scout.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are quite proud of you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item that we have is informal public comments, and I have three yellow cards today. First up, Drusilla Lowry. And if you'll, you may need to adjust the microphone. If you'll state your name and where you live, we're glad to have you here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Your mic can hear me without this, I have a loud voice, but good evening. My name is Drusilla Lowry, and I ride back, I'm about to work with Cabarrus County Transportation with the RGP program, and I was informed that y'all are considering cutting this program out, and I wish that you wouldn't because this is my way of getting to work. It's dependable, they come to my house and pick me up and take me right to my job, and I really appreciate that because I need it, because I have to work. So I wish y'all would consider not cutting this program out because I really do need it because I have to work. Thank you.
Well, and we can tell you, Ms. Lowry, that we have not cut that program out.
Okay.
Next up, we have Patsy Beaker.
I'm Patsy Beaker. I am an animal advocate, run Kitty City and Cabarrus Cares, working with a lot of different rescue groups. Yesterday, a letter appeared in The Tribune complaining that you county officials are throwing away tax dollars for animal welfare. It appears that the writer must be a fictional character. I couldn't find him under Google, Pipple.com, Whitepages.com, voter registrations, GIS, county tax listings. I don't know who this guy is. I wanted to call him and personally set Mr. Will Glenn straight on a few things. Mr. Glenn alleges that you, the commissioners and the county manager, wish to waste some $300,000 to, quote, "start an animal adoption program" and $120,000 to start an animal adoption coordinator job. While I'm no longer a member of the county's task force for animal welfare, I have attended many of their proceedings, and I can assure taxpayers that Mr. Carruth has never presented you with this budget for $420,000 taxpayer dollars. Mr. Glenn is spreading some rumors. If Mr. Glenn believes that no money is currently spent to feed and house unwanted animals at the county facility, I would like to tell him that by state law, the county is required to care for unwanted animals until they are destroyed, which is three days. If the county budget redirects any funds to the Humane Society for the daily cleaning and feeding of hundreds of cats and dogs to allow their volunteers to do the cleaning, it will free up salaried deputies in Animal Control to do their jobs of enforcing the law. Mr. Glenn states that inmates could clean at no cost. He does not realize that every day, dozens of volunteers are scooping feces, washing the floors, caring for the animals. Perhaps he could gain firsthand knowledge about the situation by volunteering his time. He might even want to go out there and help put down hundreds of unwanted animals so that more tax dollars could be saved. In a healthier economy, I would hope that the county will consider improvements to the staff and facilities of Animal Control. However, to headline this as, quote, "throwing away our tax dollars" is inflammatory, ignorant, and just plain wrong. For many taxpayers, including shut-ins and senior citizens, a pet is the main source of companionship during long nights. For many, it's a part of the family included in photos and the vacation plans, but for many folks, a dog or a cat is a temporary entertainment device that is discarded after a few months. Rescue groups are all dealing with an onslaught of Christmas present puppies and kittens who are no longer wanted. We, the independent groups, deal with that at no cost to Mr. Will Glenn or to taxpayers. Mr. Glenn seems equally ignorant of the expenses and efforts of other animal rescue organizations that supplement the county's budget for unwanted pets. My own organization spends about $100,000 per year, as does Cabarrus Pets, Kreutzer's Puppies, Tales of Hope, the Humane Society, and a dozen or so others. We don't ask for a dime of taxpayer money. If there were no animal control or independent nonprofit rescue organizations, taxpayers would be dealing with thousands of dumped dogs and cats roaming neighborhoods, spreading disease, damaging property, and attacking their personal pets. Mr. Glenn says, and I quote, "It doesn't take a genius to figure out why America is in such bad shape." I maintain that it doesn't take much of a jackass to plow up a whole field of misconceptions to plant trouble. One ignorant, unhappy, misguided person with ulterior motives and no regard for truth can do a fine job. Thank you. And I also wish that The Tribune would do a little fact checking before they would headline inflammatory things. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Price Crutchfield.
Yeah, I'd like to commend this commission for allowing me to speak out freely here. Unlike the officials over there at City Council that make those six-figure salaries that I have to furnish, they shorten condensing of bridge over there. They don't like me talking about the police molesting kids. They beg that real clear. I was in a Whataburger here not too long ago, and I was warning my fellow citizens that down in Columbia, South Carolina, this police officer, they were being sought out for molesting little boys. He had joined Big Brothers of America, and he had other obvious motives, and I was one of my fellow citizens to be on the lookout, watch your kids, and here comes this person by the name of Ron Green, a retired Concord Police Officer, who represented himself as being with the police. He said, "I am the police." And he said, "I know Mike Boss, he's my friend. I'm going to get you barred from the Whataburger." So here we got another case of the police using their influence and their power to make sure I can't talk about the police molesting kids. It's okay to talk about the coaches, it's okay to talk about the teachers and the priest, but the police never do anything like that. No, not the police. Now, I have to get a police escort when I go to pay my bills. Every time I go uptown to pay my bills and want to go inside the building, I have to call the police and get a police escort for one of three reasons. Number one, I must be a VIP. I think we can mark that off the list. Number two, I've got to be an imminent threat. We need police protection. Or someone's trying to threaten me, the police want to protect me. I think we can mark that off the list. Number three, I'm being harassed by the police for talking about the police molesting little kids. Now, a week ago, I attended a meeting at the Gibson Village Association, the chief, the former chief of police was there, and we discussed this situation at Jay Robinson School where that Concord Police Officer was charged with that felony sex crime against that minor. Every time I talk to him, he gives me a different story. The first story I got from his officers was she made all that stuff up, and then it was she didn't want to testify, and it was this, and it was that. The bottom line is, the thing wasn't even adjudicated in Concord because the police didn't want no one in Concord to hear what really went on. I know exactly what went on. The chief of police described in detail what went on in the presence of credible witnesses. A member of the school board, the city manager, myself, and the chief of police at that time, Merle Hamilton, described in detail what that police officer did, yet allowed to make a plea bargain and not register as a sex offender. Something's wrong somewhere when I got to get a police escort for complaining about stuff like that. I'm not disorderly. I'm informative. I'm in harmony with the Constitution. The police are the heavies here. These are the fascists. Hitler would be proud of these people.
Thank you. These are the only yellow cards that I have tonight, just to make sure. Okay, next, we have the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move for approval, and also want to point out in there that item number F8, and I saw that Pastor, I guess Bishop Roland Jordan is here with us tonight and just stepped in, and he asked us to pass a proclamation of recognizing Black History Month in the month of February, and that's included in this consent agenda, and I will move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Are any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have new business. We will start with cooperative extension, adoption of countywide farmland protection plan, and we will need to call for a public hearing. Jonathan Marshall.
This plan was actually brought to the Commissioners as a draft in 2006 as part of the adoption of the Voluntary Agricultural District Program, but it wasn't adopted at that time, so we're asking that you consider for adoption this evening. If you have specific questions either now or after the public hearing, both Debbie Boss and Tommy Porter are here and could answer those.
Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing for the adoption of the countywide farmland protection plan. Is there anyone to speak for or against this plan? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, are there any questions? And we have Debbie Boss here, and Mr. Porter's here. If we have any questions?
Anybody that wants to participate in the voluntary ag district, they contact whom? Mr.?
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, the question has been asked, if someone is interested in the Voluntary Agricultural District Program, who do they contact? And they would contact the Extension Office. They also could contact the Soil and Water Conservation District Office. There are applications available on the Extension Office website, the county website, and the North Carolina Department of Agriculture website. Anyone can go to any of those places and see a copy of the ordinance, a copy of the application, a copy of the farmland protection plan, and then it moves through the procedure where we have the planning department help us with a map of the property, then the application goes before the agricultural advisory board. It is approved or not approved based on factors involved in the land, and then it becomes a part of the program.
And it's the landowner that chooses to have his or her property, or their property, be part of the voluntary agricultural district?
Yes, correct. And currently, we have 134 landowners that are involved with about 11,400 acres.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions that I have.
Any other questions?
I just have a few comments. I read through all the information here, and, you know, I think it looks like a good plan, and since it's been approved by the Voluntary Agricultural District, you know, I think it's an excellent idea. And there's a lot of interesting information that I was unaware of by reading through this, and, you know, I think it's worthwhile for anyone who has any questions or, you know, wants more information about it. You know, this is in our agenda packet, and you can go online and read through, I mean, just some of the very interesting facts about our agricultural community. And, you know, I think that's the beauty of Cabarrus County is that we have, you know, rural areas, and we also have, you know, higher density areas, and, you know, that's what I like about Cabarrus County, it keeps it diverse, so I think this is an excellent program.
And add to that, I'm not sure if I've read it in here or in another document we received earlier today in regards to the Schuman analysis of our local economy, but is that we're earning kind of a catch-22 in Cabarrus County because of that, because we're not eligible for a lot of the rural grants because we're considered now a suburban county, yet, you know, there's a lot of people leasing in Cabarrus County. It would beg to differ, and if you drive out there, you can see that. So I think it's great, and I know that, you know, pretty much, even though we've not proved this, we've been living pretty much under this for the last six years, and it's been a tremendous program. And I've seen other counties, as I drive around the state, that they're starting to pop up, and I know that we were the first ones to really put stuff in place, and I'm really proud of what was done and what we see out there in the community. So I'll move for approval.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the countywide farmland protection plan. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
I think one thing, big hand goes out to Tommy and Vicky Porter. Porter, if I'm not mistaken, Vicky and Tommy individually or collectively traveled not only throughout Cabarrus County, but also Stanley County, Roan County, I mean, any county that was interested in this type of effort to educate and to advise, to talk about the importance of it, and if anybody is watching this, I'm not volunteering their services, but the cooperative extension will certainly tell you that there's a lot of benefits to it that you don't realize how important it is until you go to Mecklenburg County, near Skybrook, and there is a farmer over there that's having a world of hurt because of some people that have moved in close to them and causing a problem. So this, it doesn't protect completely, I don't think, but it certainly gives you a lot of protection.
It helps. It helps. Everything helps.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dennis Testerman from Soil and Water Conservation Farm and Ranch Lands Protection Program Application. And I think you have some board members with you. If you need to introduce anyone else, you're welcome to.
We have Louis Suther, who is on our board, and Tommy Porter, who's already been mentioned, who's actually the applicant. Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District is the entity that's going to receive the funds for this. So we are, Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District is the lead agency for conservation easements in the county. This, there was previous discussion about voluntary ag districts. Conservation easements can be term easements, or they can be permanent easements. Actually, Mr. Suther has on his farm a term easement on his pasture land, also through the federal government. In this case, we initially started out asking for a term easement on the Porter farm, and then realized that if we made a permanent easement our request from the state, that would enable us to approach the federal government for matching funds that's for permanent easements only. So they made that switch. And so we are, we have money from the state, we received a grant, $165,000 from the state, and with a match from the Porters, we're looking for $350,000 in funds from the federal The application, I think, looks like a good application. It hinges in, do we have the? Yes, we do. No, we don't. Okay. The PowerPoint, any of the slides? Okay, so the information we talked about, the work session, just briefly hinges on the stuff that we talked about tonight. The part of the county where the Porters is in is zoned agricultural open. That helped with the ranking on their application. They are participants in the enhanced voluntary ag district. That also helped with the improvement of the ranking. They look at the average size of farms, they look at the proximity to markets, they look at the development pressures. So all the policies that we've got at the local level that help protect farmland and help support an agricultural economy, all that shows to the state and federal government that we're doing our part on our end. And so I think, again, the ranking on their application looks quite good, and we're hoping for the best on that.
Commissioners, any questions?
I think it's a great program. I think it's very good, and I think we ought to approve it. I would make a motion to approve the submission of matching funds application.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
Thank you all.
Thank you. The next item we have is legislative goals. And county manager, you going to talk about that?
As we discussed in the work session a couple weeks ago, we had submitted some of the goals from the National Association of Counties to North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, as well as some of our department heads, and...
And then the commission was allowed to, or requested to submit some as well. And we have those before you. We've sort of consolidated those, some nine goals here that Commissioner White had included in his list, and we can go down there quickly here, and that was to continue to request the federal and state legislature legislatures to stop passing on unfunded mandate, unfunded mandated programs to local governments. Also, return our North Carolina lottery revenues to their original status for the schools operating in capital improvement budgets. For the Board of Elections, to allow for the creation of larger voting districts, allow counties to reduce amount of operational voting precincts, and also to continue to promote early in one-stop voting programs. The fourth one is to require state administrative offices to provide sales tax information and any other information requested by counties or cities for their budgeting purposes as needed. Allow local public health departments and health alliances to create and collect fees for restaurants and inspection purposes. Oppose collective bargaining programs for local government employees. Oppose the shift of North Carolina DOT responsibilities to counties for street construction and maintenance. Support the state's pilot project to benefit local farmers and lower-income households. Support and support the state taking over the motor vehicle registration and tax collection processes. Those were the nine goals that were submitted by Commissioner White, and at the time, at the work session, everyone was in agreement to those. There's also, following these goals on the next couple pages, were also some goals that we had requested our department heads to submit that may have helped them in administering their departments. And the first page there, on page 226, the Department of Aging was to continue to maintain funding for home and community care block grants, maintain funding for senior centers. We currently operate our two senior centers, one in Concord here and one in the town of Mount Pleasant, and some of the, we have local money that support those, but also there's also some additional state and money that helps out with those as well. Maintain funding for the Title V Senior Community Services Employment Program. Maintain Medicaid funding at current levels. And we move on to page 228, I believe so, 228. The Parks Department, our director, Ms. Lana Strong, requested that we also request continued park and recreation trust fund funding and recreational trail program funding. That would be your Part F in your RTP programs. We use that funding, and you can see examples below there of the times that we have been awarded some of those grants and the projects they've been used in throughout the county and our parks and our trails and our greenways. So those have become very valuable to the county over the years, and we're just asking that those levels of funding still become available, where they're not always available to the county. We don't always get awarded those programs, but to make sure that the funding is still there for us to compete for. And then finally, the Department of Social Services, Ben Rose, requested that we ask the state legislature to continue to receive, or to receive, to start receiving state legislatures. to receive, or to receive, to start receiving state funding to provide guardianship services as required under Chapter 35A of North Carolina general statutes. And just to back some history on that is that the Department of Social Services may be appointed the guardianship of individuals deemed incompetent by the state. And we are, we are required to become their guardian, but however, there is no funding that is passed down from the state to provide those services, so therefore we are required to do that. In the past, we have worked with, with PMOT Behavioral Health to provide that service and then based on new interpretations of the law, as far as a third-party disinterested public agent, they are no longer able to do that. And therefore, we are becoming the guardians of, of those individuals that qualify for that classification and therefore, we're requesting that that funding come along with that designation. Those are the, the goals that we as a staff have submitted along with the ones that the board has, has submitted as well. I can, we can, if you have anything to add to that, or if you, you don't think you're ready to support one of the ones that were already mentioned, we can delete those. If not, we can pass those on now to NACO and the NCACC and our legislators as well.
Okay. Any comments or questions about the goals? Is there any changes to them?
I have none, but just a couple of comments if I could. And that, one of them is on the, I reported that one last one about the guardianship funds. I mean, that's been a, a big bone of contention, but with the passage of the Medicaid waiver now for PBH as well as the other LMEs across the state, that's going to become an issue is how that, where that money comes from for guardianship because they cannot, in the new role as a, under, under the waiver, they cannot, it's a conflict of interest for them to provide the guardianship services as well because they're, they're manager of the funds, not the provider. But, so I think that's something that's very important. There's, the other ones too are all important, but the, the, overall, from the NCACC perspective, one of the things that staff, the legislative staff, liaison staff is given at the association is broad latitude to look in each area. One of the big things is, is to, is the unfunded mandates, but also to maintain the flexibility for counties and provide maximum flexibility for local governments to make decisions. And that's, so any legislation that comes up that doesn't, that violates that, then the radar screen goes up. Also would urge the other board, fellow board members that later on this summer, of course, we have County Assembly Day coming up, May 30th in Raleigh, in which we give a chance to go up and meet with legislators and talk about issues of common interest with, with other commissioners. And then, starting in the fall, there will be the legislative goals process. That's another, in preparation, a long session next year. So it's a good, a good way to get involved and be able to share. It's very interesting because you can get on any, many different steering committees and, and actually interact with other commissioners from across the state and find that we have a lot in common as far as their issues are concerned. And so I'd urge, and get involved in that if at all possible. So, but I support that. I don't have any other new goals to add.
Any other comments or goals?
I, I agree with all the goals that have been presented and I certainly hope they're well received and we will see some benefit from those.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, I just think they're, they're very important that we, we focus in on what we're going to do. And there's a lot of needs, there's always a lot of needs, but I think that when you get a, when you give a very large packet of information, it gets lost in the shuffle. I think the, it's very important what we've got to narrow it down. I think that the benefit that we receive is, is immense in my giving it that way and also talking to our representatives and our legislative delegates. So thank you. I pre, I suggest we support the ones we have.
Okay. If there's no other comments, I accept a motion that we adopt these goals. Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Next item that we have is concerning Cabarrus County Schools' requests for extension of deadline for funding several projects from the last COPS certificate of participation debt. We have a number of school members here tonight. We have the chair, Lynn Chu is here, the vice chair is also here, and Lynn Whitkey's here, so.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I just wanted to update you, I apologize for my hoarseness. I wanted to update you on the, on some of the things that have taken place in the last couple of weeks since we spoke last. The, to start with, at the Patriots Elementary School, we've reached agreement with Mr. Alexander in terms of his, his resolution of our guide wire on his land. He's willing to accept our negotiation on his behalf with the bank that owns property that he needs to cross with his access to Rocky River Road. The bank is, is willing to cooperate with us. There will be no cost to either party in this event, except for legal fees that will absorb as part of our work. So that should be handled in a very timely manner now that we have agreement from Mr. Alexander. So, so that's taken care of. The work at elementary, AT Elementary School is, as I mentioned, the canopies are ordered, they're to be delivered either late next week or the following week. Installation is approximately two weeks for both that one and the one at Patriots. So that work will be done as soon as the canopies arrive, they will be installed. Contractors are ready to go. The work at the, electric work rather, excuse me, at Hickory Ridge Middle School as well as Winkler Middle School was completed, or will, excuse me, the work at Hickory was completed last week. The work at Winkler Middle School will be completed this week and thus that work will be done, ended and those buildings fully complete and operational. The only other thing, oh, the announcers booths and storage buildings, we have both sets of documents in-house for review. Once we review them, if there's any changes, we'll get those back to the architect and then take those out to bid. So we plan on bidding that during the month of March and construction to follow. So, any questions?
So you feel like you're going to be finished with all of these projects by when?
By June 1st.
Any before that or?
Oh, yes, yes. I mean, as far, excuse me, one other one that I left out was the work for Mr. Joyner's property at ATL. And that work, the drawings are completed, they will be completed next week and we will go out to bid as well in the month of March. So all of that work that remains to be done will be done by June 1st.
Okay. Questions from Commissioners?
I'm just perplexed as to why it took so long to get all this done. I mean, these, these schools have been open and running for several, I mean, a year and a half. And it's just, I'm not, I'm frustrated why it's taken so long. And I don't think it needs to be extended anymore, is, is my opinion, is that we've had, the schools have been open. I know that Patriots, ATL and Hickory, or Patriots and ATL, hasn't that been open for 18 months?
Approximately, yes, sir.
And Hickory Ridge has been open for longer than 18 months.
No, it's about the same time.
Same time?
Yes, sir.
And then Winkler just opened up this past August.
Correct.
Yeah. It's just very frustrating, is, is what I see. And, and also, I don't understand why the electrical has to be bid out. I mean, I under, you know, I, I thought we had, aren't there some electricians that work for the school department, for the school?
We have, yes, sir. Those are maintenance electricians.
Okay. And, and, you know, I, I don't know why they couldn't have done this work when, I'm not an electrician, but I don't think it, I didn't think it was that complex to have to hire somebody outside the school system to do some of this electrical work. I don't, I can't speak to that, but, and I'm a novice on it. I understand. And so if someone corrects me and tells me I'm wrong, I understand that. I have no problems with it. But I don't think that it's that hard to get some of this change order for electrical connection to a storage building. I think that's something that should be done in-house and that would save us at least $2,000, we're right at $2,000 on one project and about $4,000 on another project. That's just, I just, I just don't see where that's necessary getting it hired outside.
I, I will say, if I can answer your points.
Yeah.
In terms of the electrical work, it was a bit more involved. It required trenching between the, the storage building and the main building at Winkler and then working through all the systems to get to a remote place in the building for power. And, and that's where the available panel and the source of power was. So it took quite a bit of work on the, on the part of the electrician and that's why it was more expensive. The other one, again, it required trenching and, and connection between the existing building and the new. And in reality, these, this, this was a contractor that did the work on the building. Probably in retrospect, had I, had I known that it was not included in the initial bid, I would, I wouldn't have insisted that it be, be included, simply because with our staff and the amount of work that we have to do with 50 buildings, we're, we're up to our ears in work orders every day. And it would be difficult to take on this kind of commitment and do it in a timely manner. So that was the one benefit from, with going with, with the contractor on, on hand, if you will.
Okay.
With regard to the status of the projects, I think I mentioned, the reason of the mediation work on Mr. Joyner's property was delayed. It was delayed on purpose. It was delayed because we felt that the contractor who was working onsite at ATL and had failed to deliver the project correctly. It took them until this last August to finish their work. And then in September, the engineer who's responsible to Dean, to approve it, finally was able to make final, or accept the system, if you will, for us and tell Dean that it was properly installed. All that time, for a year, they've been going back and forth. They, I think they installed one pond three times before they got it right.
Were they paid before last August?
Not all their money, no, sir.
Well, they shouldn't have gotten any money. I mean, if they don't do the job right, then they don't get paid until they get the job right.
Withheld.
Okay.
Mr. Burge?
Pete, you done said you done done the electrical work, right?
Yes, sir.
Put it on my, just while you had a state license, electric work figured out or not?
In regards to the, the electrical work, I remember you mentioning in the previous meeting that the electricians that you have on staff are more for maintenance rather than new construction projects. Is that correct?
That is typically the case, as the reasoner. We, they have historically always done maintenance work for the school system. Occasionally, we've done an install of an electrical line. But the, the requirements are that, that once they, if they commit their license to us, they pretty much give up their opportunity to use their own license to do work for, for a neighbor or for a family member or whatever. They can no longer do that sort of work for profit outside of working for the school district. So we are, we are working internally to see if we can compensate them appropriately so that, that their licenses can be used by the school district. Up until this point, that has not been the decision of, of the school district. In the past, we used to hire that work done. So, you know, it's sort of, you know, the, a number of these things coming together at the same point in time, I guess I would say. But, but that is the process. We will look at providing a stipend for those three or four tradesmen that are willing to give up their licenses and commit those to the school district so we can do some of the work that, that we're talking about.
Right. Okay. You know, I've, I've listened to the arguments and I'm, I'm really confused at why there's much hesitation to extend the deadline. This, there's, it's not costing the county any more money. We're not putting any more money into it at all. You know, in a list of these projects, of course, in projects, there's going to be issues that take place or, you know, issues that arise that you would not foresee. And of course, you know, there has to be time taken to work through those. And I think Mr. Whitkey's done an excellent job. And all of my workings with him, I think, I think he does excellent job. And I think the county, the school system is lucky to have him and I think they appreciate what he does. You know, I don't see any reason why we couldn't extend these deadlines. Also, you know, I know in conversations that we had is that, you know, you came into this project list, you know, in your new position, taking over a new position, trying to figure all that out and trying to work through this process. So certainly, that would create some delay with staff changes. And I know you had a shortage of staff there for a little while. So I certainly understand the time it's taking and extending it to June, I don't think is going to create any critical issues. Now, if this was going to, you know, cost the county more money, but it's not going to cost the county any more money. So I, I certainly don't see why, the money's here, why can't we extend the deadline?
Any more comments?
Only thing I need to say is I, I can see Mr. White saying in some ways that, you know, got, had, these schools have been open a while. And, but I also understand what Mr. Meesmer was saying as well, was that, you know, you come into some of this, inherited some of this. But I also want to add too, and I think this goes beyond and much bigger than this, is that, you know, we've, we've just gone through reval and people, this week actually, we, our emails will probably start heating up and phones heating up when people are starting to receive their reval notices. We're seeing something that's unprecedented and that's a drop in property values in the county. And, which means that to achieve the same level of revenue, we're going to, you know, consider raising the tax rate. And when you look at the spending, right now, three quarters of the tax, property tax dollars that come into this county are going through the school systems for either operations or debt service on new schools. And it's going to become more and more critical that, and I know, of course, looking at it too, as far as staffing is concerned, when we got the, out of 115 school systems, we're rated 115th as far as state funding is concerned, that, but more and more of, you know, that's the only place there is money anymore is, is in the school systems because that's taking up the majority of our tax dollars. So it's important that we, the community sees that, yeah, if these things, things are, are planned, there's a well-thought-out process going forward as how things, projects are managed and things like that, so that we're not wasting money and not seeing that people get, have a confidence level that things are being managed well. So, but again, I could say, I, again, we're not, it's not any new money. I just want to see this get done and I hope that we don't see you back, you know, in May asking for another extension on these projects, so.
You, you won't, I, I think. Oh, sure. Mr. Blake, I...
I just wanted to make a quick comment on the, the delays and Mr. White's comment. Speaking as a general contractor and a land developer, it is absolutely maddening when things aren't done on a quick basis and accomplished. But sometimes, you know, things just, by the nature of the bees, they just get delayed, whether it's a code official, whether it's a plan review or something of that nature. And I believe Mr. Burge could probably speak to code officials and how much power they can have over a project and the time that it can take. So, you know, I, I agree and I appreciate Mr. Meesmer's comments that Mr. Whitkey has done a tremendous job with, with his staff and getting these projects together. And we certainly would appreciate your, your consideration. But I, I did just want to tell you, you know, it is frustrating. It's very frustrating. But we just, we're confident that with, with what's left to be done, that we can get done in the timeline that you've outlined. So, thank you for letting me.
Well, everything you're talking about has to be done anyway, right?
Yes, sir. It does.
So, and I understand if you mess with government, you get delayed. They change the rules. When you find out what they are, they're going to change them again. So, you know, if you got, you got to do it, why not just go ahead and let's get it done?
Well, the, what I think that some, and it's okay to, to get it done, but the question is how is it costing us more money? These weren't in the original plans. This isn't what, this is not what we were told is going to cost us, nor were we told we're going to have to, we needed a canopy and we needed the announcers booth and we needed those. Those things were not in the plan. So these are additions to the plan. And when, that's costing us extra money. And staff has asked several times to close out this project on the COPS so that we can have a final amount, that we know exactly what we're doing. And now it, it, it's delayed upon delayed upon delayed. So that the project has grown, it's morphed into a larger project than what it was initially planned. And when there's been a request, there was already a deadline that was asked to be extended, which staff extended, I believe. And now it's asked to extend it again. So, I mean, that's all I'm saying is that we...
Why was it not put in the original contract? You knew, you had to have all this, you had to have a, a storage building, you had to have an announcers booth, had to have power going to it. Why wasn't it put in the original contract?
It's, it's something that I can't...
I realize you weren't there when it was, my understanding.
If I'm not mistaken, and correct me if I'm wrong, it was on the original drawings. The numbers came in high and you put it on the back burner and then rebid it now have a better price than the first time around. Is that not correct?
On the announcers piece, yes.
Yeah, on the announcers booth.
Yes.
And storage shed?
No.
No? Okay. Well, that was the announcers booth. So, okay.
And I think that, you know, as we developed the design standards, the new schools would include all of these things. I assure you, I, I take no pleasure in worrying about all these smaller pieces of the project. And actually, as we were going through the project with the general contractors and as we were nearing completion, we asked for them to bid this work so that it could be done in a more timely manner. And they all basically refused us. They said, you know, and, and they were hoping for better things in the economy, thinking that this would tie them up, tie their money up. They decided they didn't want any part of it. of this, and so we weren't able to include it in the, with the original scope of work, if you will, with the original contractors. You know, hindsight is great, I would absolutely say it should be included, and it will be next time. The delays, in some cases, as I've mentioned, in dealing with the pond work at ATL, we asked for the subcontractors to be fired several times, we were refused. We can only, outside of, you know, bringing lawsuit, that's all we could have done. We felt that he was not as competent as he should have been in this work. It proved to be the case, and it cost him dearly in the process. We do have systems that work now, but as I said, replacement of a pond of that size three times is an amazing undertaking, and he, there was no way that he could have made any money on that project, but that's the nature of work in the public sector. At times, you don't have the leverage that you do in the private sector in dealing with those issues. So, we were kind of betwixt and between in terms of, we had to wait for him to complete work to know how bad it was or how good it was. He finally got it right, we realized that the impact on the Joyner's property was ours to deal with, and we're dealing with it. But you couldn't make that call a year ago, there was no way to really do that, and not waste taxpayer money in the process.
Okay. My only comment would be that as we proceed, we had the school site guidelines under consent earlier tonight. As we proceed, I think that we need to set a reasonable time on projects on when we expect them to be finished. It's a staff item as far as closing out these COPS from 2009, and I would just hope that, I understand that we need to get these projects done, so I don't have a problem with that, but I do think that we need to get a better understanding of how long it's going to take on, for example, any currently outstanding projects that you're working on, and our staff needs deadlines for us dealing with bond counsel and closing these projects out, and we need to work hard on the deadlines. Also, looking at these, though, there's been a slight jab at governments delaying projects, I don't believe any of these were done as a result of inspections on government part.
No, no.
So, I just want to clear that up. These are not delays based on a government going out and doing inspection and deciding that, that that's a problem.
Right. The only delay we had was a difference of opinion between us and the Building Review Board.
And I know those things, but I'm just, these are, the canopy was something you needed to add after the fact because you realized that the playground equipment was getting very hot.
Yes.
I don't have a problem with that, but I'm just saying, those are not things that, Cabarrus County didn't delay these projects for any reason to get these done, and so I just want to clear that up in case somebody misunderstood that. So, at this time, we do have before us the request to extend the COPS until July the 1st, 2012, and we have gotten assurances that these projects will be done by then.
June 1st.
June, I'm sorry. Why I said July?
Yeah.
June 1st of 2012.
I make the motion that we approve it, like I say, I would like to see this get done, but I also would, I guess, add as part, not part of the motion, but make a comment in addition to the motion. We were just talking about legislative goals a moment ago. Having been on this board now, going on 12 years, we've, it seems like, you know, anybody, any county in the state, any school system should know about how to build schools, it should be Cabarrus County Schools and Cabarrus County Government. And from the siding to purchase to letting the contract, and we have these little things that come up all the time, I think what would be a worthwhile thing is, because we've had so much of that, is that I believe that it would be, I think a legislative goal maybe would be, for the long session next year, is a study commission be put together to look and review, along with School Board Association, on how do you, what are the bureaucratic pitfalls, the donut holes, that we, that cause the lack of local control over building schools? And when you have them people that can dictate, and some bureaucrat in Raleigh can then turn around and dictate and stop a project cold in its tracks and cost more money, and how can we resolve that, and how can we get it so that there will be a better meshing, so that we can get a solid process locally to, for the whole process, everything, all the way from the time that you drive out, take a look at a piece of property, until the time that the key is handed to the principal when the school is open and the project's complete. And so, that may be something, maybe the, not for this set we just adopted, but something to look towards the fall in the new, with the new long session next year, so.
Okay. Well, I do have a motion to, sorry, yes, sir.
Madam Chair, for a point of clarification before you vote, I just want to make sure that what you're voting on is the list that Mr. Whitkey has before you, these projects, no additional projects, and no other expenses or invoices related to this project. We're cutting it off at the end of this month, but it will be extended to June 1st for these projects that have been identified by Mr. Whitkey.
That was your motion?
That's my motion, yep.
Okay. Okay. For these projects that are identified, we have a motion to extend the deadline to June the 1st, 2012, and for these projects only. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries for one. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And next, we have appointments to boards and committees. The first one we have is the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. At this time, I accept a motion, let's see, we have an application from Belinda Dublin. She has been pre-qualified by the Regional Ombudsman, and the term of appointment for Teresa Dakens will end February 28th, and Ms. Dakens has, is interested in being reappointed. So, at this time, I accept a motion to appoint Belinda Dublin to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee for a one-year term ending February 28th, 2013, and a motion to reappoint Teresa Dakens to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending February 28th, 2015.
Term moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have appointments to the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority. The term of appointment for David Black on the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority ended January the 10th, 2012. Mr. Black is interested in serving another term, and exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy is needed for him to continue. The authority meets only as needed, the county attorney also serves as the contact for this authority. So, at this time, I accept a motion to reappoint David Black to the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority for a six-year term ending January 10th, 2018, including an exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy.
Term moved.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And next, we have appointment to the Parks Commission. At its January 19th, 2012 meeting, the Parks Commission voted to recommend the appointment of Scott Brown from Harrisburg, Martha Macon from Kannapolis, Danita Rickard of Kannapolis School Board, and the reappointment of Blake Keiger from Cabarrus County Schools, School Board, and Donnie Broome from Central District to its membership. So, at this time, I accept a motion to appoint Scott Brown, Martha Macon, and Danita Rickard to the Parks Commission for three-year terms ending January 31st, 2015, and to reappoint Blake Keiger and Donnie Broome to the Parks Commission for three-year terms ending January 31st, 2015. Have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And for Piedmont Area Mental Health, Mental Retardation and Substance Abuse Authority, at its December 19th, 2011 regular meeting, the board adopted a joint resolution of the Boards of County Commissioners of Alamance, Cabarrus, Caswell, Davidson, Rowan, Stanley, and Union Counties. The resolution states the area board shall be composed of 21 members with three members from each county. Sabrina Hafer's term of appointment to the authority ends June 30th, 2012. She has served two terms and is ineligible for reappointment to meet the new board requirements. It is requested that her position be eliminated and her name removed from the roster. At the work session, Commissioner Carruth advised that Tana Hartzell has tendered her resignation, and he requested her position not be filled until the reorganization of Piedmont Behavioral Healthcare Board is complete. So, at this time, we need a motion to remove Sabrina Hafer and Tana Hartzell from the Piedmont Area Mental Health.
Madam Chair, no, actually, Sabrina will stay on until June, her term's up in June, so.
Okay. Ms. Hafer will stay on until June the 30th, 2012.
Right. When her term expires, she's ineligible for reappointment.
And at that time, then, we would remove her from the board. Okay. And Tana Hartzell, however, is, has resigned, so we are making a motion to accept her resignation. Is that correct? Do we need to do that? Okay. So, you want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, to accept the resignation of Tana Hartzell from.
And we made a comment there, Ms. Hartzell was, she had sent a letter to the Chairman of the Board of PPH, and she expressed she is the State President now of the Women's Missionary Union, and she thought she would be able to do both, fill both capacities, but she said over the time, a few months she had been there with the retirement, believe the executive director of the WMU, she has not, she realized that she did not have enough hours in the day to do both those, so that's why she had felt she needed to step down from PPH. She's been a very active member, though, of the board there for many years, and I'm sure will still be involved at some point in the future in their organization.
And we would like to thank them both for their service. So, I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And we have, at this time, Commissioners, does anyone have reports or updates that they would like to share with us based on their services liaisons to various boards? We always like to make a request for anybody who is interested in serving on any of the county boards and committees. We have vacancies on the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Animal Protection and Preservation Advisory Committee, Concord Planting and Zoning Commission for the Extraterritorial Position Council for a Sustainable Local Economy, Harrisburg Fire Advisory Board, Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, and there's positions on the Youth Council. And then, at this time, any general comments by board members before you do that? We would like to go ahead and, at this time, congratulate Commissioner Carruth.
Yes.
For completing the 26.2 mile by low Myrtle Beach marathon this past Saturday.
Thanks.
Congratulations. Glad it was you. Do you have other comments?
Well, I was going to add to that, and thank you, thank you for that recognition. I had, but I wanted, I think it was even a bigger accomplishment, I've, either by sheer luck or providence, I have tendency to gravitate towards the latter. About mile eight on Saturday, there was a woman and her daughter passed me, and got about two feet in front of me, and they started talking about Margaret Hagerty, who is, is what many in the community well knows, started her marathon career very late, late in her life, and she has become a very well-known runner. Found out that it was a local attorney, Sue Schneider, and her daughter Alexandria, we landed up going the rest of the 18 remaining miles together and finishing it, and I wanted just to, I may have been one of the biggest guys out there running it. But Alexandria, she is 14 years old, and from looking at the results of race, she was the youngest to complete the marathon. And she had, her training program, she had run cross-country, and at the, I forget the name of the school in Harrisburg, the charter school in Harrisburg, but she's a student there, and she had, the longest she had ran before Saturday was a 5K. And so, I commend her, she hit the wall about mile 17, but she, we got her encouraged, and she finished, finished it up. I finished with a big old blister on my foot, and so, that was the worst thing that had happened to me, so.
At least she finished.
But it was an experience.
That was the important thing. I think my niece Hannah was down there in that one also, so, congratulations again. The next thing that we have is closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A3, to discuss threatened or pending litigation, and we, of course, would invite our county attorney to join us in closed session.
Motion to go into closed session.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much to our viewing audience, and we will see you next month.